I'm Beckett and we've got Mike Castello down in the end. So, welcome everybody. Next item on our agenda is acceptance of the agenda. I have a motion.
I make a motion?
Second.
Very good. Any discussions, comments? Good to go. All those in favor of the agenda as presented? Moving on. Approval of the minutes of August 17th, 2016. Very good.
Second.
Any additions, corrections? Is this Paula's last act or was this...? Okay. Good work. Thanks Sophie. I reviewed quickly. I did not see anything. Any other edits? Very good. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the minutes as presented? Good. Moving on. We have one public hearing. This is a continuation of a project. We heard the sketch plan application last time. It's a preliminary subdivision plan application of M&amp;M Truck Sales for an eight lot subdivision on Union Street and a portion of a 9.1 acre lot identified as tax map 31-2, Lot 1, to be known as Riverside Estates. Can I have the applicant step up to the mic? Tell us who you are and please give us a summary since the last time we met.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jim Kaiser. I'm here representing the applicant, M&amp;M Truck Sales. With me tonight is also the owners of M&amp;M is Mary and Maury Thayer. We have before you an eight lot subdivision on a portion of Union Street, the lower end of Union Street, so that it's the last parcel of land that extends from essentially the Orno Sewer District Pump Station all the way to the end of Union Street. The applicant owns approximately nine, well over nine acres in one parcel, which is what we're subdividing. Eight lots off of, for about 6.3 acres, so that we'll have several acres left over that the applicant is going to retain. As part of the application, because we have adjacent land, we did submit in a conceptual sketch plan for that property and the remaining property that is part of this nine acre lot. That's before you, just as a really a conceptual of what may be done with it. There are some obstacles associated with the larger 26 acre lot, which include an eagle's nest down in the shoreline and a request by the Maine Historic Preservation Commission for some further studies of a possible trading post on that property. So that if anything does happen down there, we will have additional studies. But again, that's not part of what we're here for. We're only here for eight acre, or eight lot subdivision along Union Street itself. I can go into more detail or if you prefer at this point in time or wait until you get further comments, whatever the board prefers.
I think that's sufficient for now. Are there any initial comments for the applicant? All right. Evan usually provides us a summary of each project. I do want to talk to the board briefly and let folks in attendance know, again, the applicant just mentioned that the project before us this evening is an eight lot subdivision. Those of you that attended the last meeting, we do have the option as a planning board, we like to know what might be coming next. So we asked for us, you know, a conceptual plan that was provided to the board. It was in our application, but yet we are not reviewing that part of it. We're going to allow some questions, some comments from the audience this evening as we proceed, just so the applicant can hear what those concerns may be. But I want to be quite clear, we don't have that plan in front of us. It's just a concept. There's an idea. We've seen a couple of roads. There's a bunch of lots on there. But what we're looking at this evening is an eight lot subdivision. But yet the board can consider, given that we see a concept before us that may or may not happen, we can prepare, you know, ahead for what may be needed for infrastructure right away, those kinds of things. So that's something that the board's going to need to consider. But I wanted to be clear with you, the audience. We'll invite comments later, but we are really looking at that eight lot subdivision this evening. So with that, Evan, you prepared a quite a lengthy summary. If you could review that with the board, please?
Yes. This is as Mr. Kaiser indicated, the eight lot subdivision. It's important to note that, as stated in the application and as presented in the plan, this will, these eight lots will be served by a public water supply line which exists on Union Street and for which the Water District and Fire Department indicates there is adequate capacity and pressure. It will be served by Lot Number One, which is the lot that's opposite the boat ramp and nearest the pump station at the curve, will be sewed because it is within 200 feet of the existing public system. The other lots are not within 200 feet of the existing public system and won't be without an extension. And they are proposed to be served by septic systems. Any subdivision that's going to be served by, this is the guidance as given by Superintendent Joe Madigan. The, any lot served by septic system under our ordinance, but with public water, has to be at least 30,000 square foot minimum with 125 feet of frontage. The lots meet that standard. The one lot, Lot Number One, that will have public sewer, has to have 20,000 square feet and 100 feet of frontage and that exceeds that minimum. And any lot served by septic system has to have two test pits by a licensed soils investigator with, found to be suitable, so that one has a choice of which location depending on where the building's going to be. But also if one system fails or one leach field fails, a second leach field would be readily available. And that's been provided by the applicant and it's in your packets. The applicant has ownership of the property, so they have right, title or interest. Technical detail, which you may ask, you know, Mr. Kaiser or Mr. Thayer about, there was on the subdivision plan, consistent with the deed that M&amp;M Truck Sales acquired from the previous owner, there's a 50-foot right of way shown that runs on the west side of the subdivision, extending between the former railroad right of way, spur right of way and the main line right of way. That right of way was established according to the chain of deeds some 70 years ago in mid 1940s. In our review of that chain of deeds, we could not see how this property was, how that right of way was associated with the property acquired. So we made inquiries about that and just, so you'll see in my comments, that if that remains part of the subdivision, it should be documented at the final plan stage that in fact that's part of the property. I've not seen it at this point. That doesn't mean it's not there. It's technically, it doesn't have any effect on this, on these eight lots. Nothing's proposed to do with it with respect to these eight lots, but would not want to further memorialize that if that's not accurate in, you know, by, through a signed recording plat and registered deeds. So I called that out as a need for clarification. You have, you had, I think adequately described the concept plan and its legal status. I'll just underscore that that concept plan will, would have no legal standing, one way or another, following whatever action this board might take on this eight lot subdivision. The property is, slopes generally from Union Street toward the railroad spur line. There's a wetland back there which occupies a portion of the rear, the rear portions of four of the lots and which eventually drains the Johnny Mack Brook, which curls back around and drains the Penobscot River. So it's not a direct drainage to the Penobscot River, but eventually it gets there through wetlands and Johnny Mack Brook. There is a culvert underneath Union Street that takes some drainage from the Union Street properties across the street. And it, that drainage needs to be accommodated, continue to be accommodated. And the applicant would do so by providing a 20-foot wide right of way, drainage right of way, drainage easement to the town. And the developer would create a swale, a grass swale there between Lots 7 and 8 when those lots are actually developed. The road along which these eight lots will be arrayed and from which they'll have their driveways, Union Street, is only a 40-foot right of way. Its pave width is in the 18 to 20-foot range at that lower end of Union Street. That is below the standards of a new road. If they were building a new road today as part of this development, it would have to be a 50-foot right of way, 50 feet, so they could accommodate sidewalks, utilities, a 24-foot paved width, you know, those sorts of things. That's the standard in Orno and in many places. Under our ordinance, if a subdivision is going to be arrayed along an existing road, public road that is substandard in some, in its width and its dimensions, land must, some land must be acknowledged as potentially available for expansion in order to get that street at least closer, if not entirely up to standard. At sketch plan and in this preliminary application, they are indicating deeding to the town an addition of five-foot width along the entire length of the subdivision and wider along the, around the curve, so that where the public road now appears to intrude upon private property, that would be remedied. You'll see comments from Mandy Oliver, our town engineer, that in view of the concept plan. Remember, the concept plan is there explicitly in our ordinance, so that the planning board can evaluate the eight lot subdivision in this case in the context of that possible bigger picture. That's why it's there. And one of the implications of the scale of, of the scale of the idea and the concept development is that there may be some infrastructure requirements along Union Street if and when there was something like that proposed and approved. And the 45-foot widths, the 40 plus the five feet being offered, in Mandy's opinion, may not be sufficient. They're almost, the planning board, the ordinance would require in the new subdivision sidewalks, for example, it would only make sense that that sidewalk would extend to these eight lots as well and along the existing Union Street right of way. That five-foot sidewalk with whatever drainage improvements may be required to go along with that, plus possible utility replacements and things, you know, water and potentially sewer, although I don't think that's what they would be intending, may simply require more than the five-foot, up to 10-foot addition to bring it up to the full 50 feet. It would, that would put the center line of Union Street skewed toward their property, but there would be no other way practically to get the 50 feet that would be required to accommodate the kind of infrastructure that likely would be necessary to accommodate the scale of the concept that was proposed. So you'll see those comments from Mandy Oliver in her, in her letter, and you'll see that in trans, stated in my comments to you. In terms of natural resources, the key natural resource in this, associated with these eight lots would be that a portion of a wetland that's along those rear, rear part of those four lots that I mentioned. That's part of a much larger wetland that is between the two railroad, the spur, former spur line and the main line, which in turn is associated with the lower end of Johnny Mack Brook. Otherwise, according to the natural resource inventory provided, there are no vernal pools. There are no threatened or endangered botanical or wildlife species. It's outside of the 100-year flood plain as provided by FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency. And only a tiny corner of Lot Number One is in the shoreline zone. For the most part, this is outside of the shoreline zone. The eagle's nest was mentioned. There, I think there are two eagle's nests as documented in the application and the letter from Department of Island Fish and Wildlife. One that US Fish and Wildlife Service uses a 660-foot radius for managing. Doesn't, doesn't mean no development, but it managed, to manage the area around eagle's nests and as mapped that touches a corner of, of this eight lot subdivision, but you know, just at the very tail end. It would be mostly, most of the impact would be on the area, on the other 26 acres owned by this owner. And the second nest may have some impact on that as well. There are, as they indicated, historical, potential historical resources as well as natural resources, including shoreline area and within that additional 26 acres. But those would be matters to consider. Very important to make sure everybody's aware of those. But those would be matters to consider if and when a future application comes in. They do not appear to impact these eight lots. There, there is no turnaround at the end of Union Street at this point. So emergency vehicles and public safety vehicles, and public works vehicles now, and you can see it out there, you can see the treads in the worn area, they come off and they, they just go on to what is the applicant's property and to turn around. And it's kind of a semi-circle that they leave Union Street, come back and turn around. The applicant proposes to give a temporary easement, access easement to the town, 30 feet by 100 foot in dimension to accommodate that turnaround officially. They would anticipate that if they extend Union Street as part of another application, that would be with cul-de-sac and a full turnaround. That is satisfactory to our public works director and to the fire department, this temporary easement of that dimension. There is at this point, you know, Union Street is not interconnected, well interconnected, you know, the closest, it obviously intersects Brook Street, but Brook Street is itself a dead end, so it does not interconnect, it interconnects with Island Ave, with, connects to Island Ave and then, you know, Hammond comes off of Island and then you get up to Main Street. So there's not good interconnection here. It's an existing street, preexisted our ordinances. The planning board at sketch plan talked about the possibility, you know, the possible merits or not of having an interconnection now, just a 50-foot right of way that would serve as a possible connection between Union Street and the spur right, this spur, railroad spur which is no longer used for that purpose. It would provide only a very limited way if anybody were to ever build that connection and come back over to Union Street. It would just bypass basically the eight lots and the homes on the, existing homes on the lower end of Union Street, and it would go right through the middle of a wetland. So the fire department's not, doesn't see that. My discussions with Henry Vaughn does not see that as, as very useful. They would see something as critically necessary interconnection should there be an extension of Union Street. And you'll see in the conceptual plan that they've shown a place where there might be some connection to that railroad spur near the, its intersection with the main line of the railroad. But at this point, there is not one proposed. This is an eight lot subdivision for single-family homes. By the way, the applicant includes a declaration of, proposed declaration of covenants and restrictions that would limit these eight lots to single-family homes only, with some minimum square footage, you know, 1,000 square feet to 1,200 square foot, a minimum floor area with one-car garages at And those, single-family homes, this is way, way, way under the threshold for requiring traffic impact analysis. Obviously, when you have, as we do throughout Orno, dead-end streets, all of which exit out on the Main Street, and we know that Main Street is a busy street. And the closer you get to downtown and the university, the more difficult it is to exit and make especially left-hand turns. No impact analysis required of this, but I did do a standard analysis of traffic flow based on Institute of Traffic, Transportation Engineers manuals and compared it with the existing flows on Main Street. And you know, the, there's minimal, it's just, eight single-family house lots will generate peak traffic of eight or nine vehicle trip ends during the peak hour and 75 to 80 total trip ends during a 24-hour period. And that trip end is one vehicle leaving or one vehicle entering. And that includes, you know, postal and delivery and it's not just the people coming in and out of the homes. It's all, all traffic that could be associated with the activities of those single-family My opinion is the impact on traffic would be minimal. If they do something bigger, that might be a different story. Pedestrian access, there is, there are no sidewalks. It's a very low-volume street, so people who are walking use the street. The closest sidewalk is at, at the bottom of Island Avenue. It's a brand-new sidewalk. It's a very nice sidewalk, but it stops before the railroad tracks. The, if this, again, if they were building a new road for the subdivision, they, the ordinance requires a sidewalk and the planning board could waive that requirement if justification were shown. Conversely, you could require a sidewalk here if you believe that those eight lots would generate a level of pedestrian activity that warranted it or that a level of auto traffic or other traffic that would, you know, make it dangerous for pedestrians and considering the deal, the degree to which it is already, could be interconnected. And in this case, there's no opportunity to interconnect from the Lot One up to Island Avenue. It's not, according to public works director, it's not, at this point, feasible. Again, if you're talking about something more than this as presented in the conceptual plan, then I think a sidewalk likely would be required all the way down to and including Lots 1 through 8 as part of that construction. But that would be a matter for future based on what they ultimately propose, if anything. Summary of the community facilities, there is, there's no public land proposed other than the easements and the right of way that we've talked about and the drainage easement. We will need draft, you know, the language of the deeds and the easements at the time of final plan reviewed by our town attorney. They're not proposing any improvements to the, to the street, including street lights or landscaping at this point. There are three street lights from around, just around the curve, you know, upstream of the, of Lot Number One, around that curve, down to the end of Union Street. There are also three fire hydrants in that, in that same general length. There is a trail system now that goes through the, these eight lots and continues on towards the 26 acres, but there's never been any public easements or public rights there, although it's been certainly used by the public, by at least non-objection from the property owners. So that's, I guess that's it. You know, when it comes to it, we can, you can review my recommendations, but I think it would be premature to do that now because I think you need to hear from, more from the applicant if you have questions or certainly from the public.
Great. Thank you very much, Evan. Questions from the board before we open up the public hearing? I do have one initially. You've received communication from the town engineer. You've heard the summary. I think you've spoken with town staff. Could you address the proposed right of way width and just provide the board any insight of whether you think existing utilities could be squeezed into 45 feet or?
Yeah. From the standpoint of the right of way width, what we looked at was the aspect of the intent to have center line of right of way and center line of roadway be one in the same. So in doing that, and we then said, okay, with a 50-foot right of way, that would be 25 feet on our side of the road, which would make, that's where we came up with the 45 feet. Now, if you look at your standard scenario of 24-foot road and five-foot sidewalk, that always goes into 25 feet on your standard 50-foot right of way. So we will have 25 feet on our side of the road, so no matter what would be required, if anything is required, there would be room on that side of the road to put those services in place. The water line is on the other side of the road. It's right now running down just under the edge of pavement. And to continue that, it's only a very short section from the end onto our property. And if then the road is extended, then that would be a 50-foot right of way with the extra five feet on that side. So then the future water line could go in quite readily following that same side of the road going down through.
I believe the last time you had mentioned that you would anticipate that the additional five feet would come from neighboring properties on the riverside?
If the town had ever wanted to make it a full 50 feet, that's, that would leave their center lines of the right of way and the roadway in the same spot, so that they are one in the same. Otherwise, you run the risk of basically having a center line of the road different than the center line of the right of way. And then if and when they are ever had a reconstruction, there would, there just tends to be a little bit more issues that can evolve out of it from the standpoint of where the property lines really are coming down through there.
I took a drive down there. There is not much room on that other side of the road.
No, but we are proposing to do anything on that side of the road. We might have to add, if the roadway went out to a full 24 feet, that would mean that from a 20-foot width, there'd be four feet added. So there'd be two feet on one side of the road and two feet on the other side. And in the 45 feet, that would still leave about eight feet to the property lines, which is what would be left in a normal, with a sidewalk on it, there's eight feet left to the property or right of way line on its standard 50 foot. So we feel that there is plenty of room to do what could be required if future development does occur going down through there with very minimal disturbance to, to any of the properties. It would all be within the right of way and easily addressed from that standpoint. So we do feel that that, that still works from the standpoint on it of keeping that right of way center line and the roadway center line as the same location.
Questions, additional questions on the board? Any clarification on that point? I did want to hear what the applicant.
I'd say about that, but...
I don't have a question for the applicant, but I have a question for Evan. So just to make sure I understand what you said clearly about the sidewalk earlier. If the conceptual expansion occurs, we could go back and require a sidewalk with tonight's proposal?
Yes, you could, yes. You could, you could, you can always require, if the facts justify it, external improvements. So certainly inside the subdivision, the assumed, de facto assumption of the ordinance is that when you're building a new road, you're going to build a new sidewalk with it. it. The fact that you've got basically a neighborhood that has, that would become several times larger than what it now is, including the first eight lots, I think you could certainly require a sidewalk the entire length to serve the eight, and along the existing Union Street as well as its extension.
Question on stormwater management, too. Your proposal is to use the existing wetland to mitigate any increases in flow from the development of the lots. Is that correct?
Correct. It, it does naturally, is what we're saying. We're not putting any real structures or altering that in any way. We just demonstrated that by going into that wetland, it has very little, with the surface area of that wetland, it has very, very little impact on, on that area itself. And then, once it leaves that, you know, as it slowly flows out of that area across the old right-of-way, it, it will even have less impact overall, considering that the entire area across the railroad spur is predominantly wetland, as Evan had pointed out, and then that flows to Johnny Mac, so.
Other questions? All right, I'm going to open it up to, to public hearing. Again, just, just to clarify, welcome your comments on what might happen down the road, but again, just keep in mind that, you know, we're not making any decisions on that. We're going to make decisions, I think you heard the, the summary that Evan provided, that we do have some flexibility within the eight-lot subdivision and to plan ahead, but really, we can't go too far into, you know, any specifics with the, you know, the future plan, so. With that in mind, but we, and we still welcome comments. We appreciate you coming out tonight. So please step up to the mic, state your name and your concerns.
Sidney Sinclair, live at fifteen Brook Street. Liking to think ahead a little bit further than just this, it might be recommended to put in a sewer line versus using septic systems, because if that additional property does get developed, they're not going to be able to put septic systems up in there necessarily. They might, but maybe not. So that is just a comment, just so you know. As far as impact on traffic, leaving and going up Island Avenue and crossing the street, the impact already exists with a number of people who currently live there without this additional subdivision. That will just make it worse, the current, the additional subdivision. I think that we need to consider putting a traffic light, even if it is an intermittent one, whatever, at the intersection of Island Avenue and Main Street. It is virtually impossible at some times to get across that street unless you're in a tank. And the Army doesn't allow me to keep my tank. They told me to give it back, so I don't got it. These are all going to be single-family dwellings, and I like that. That right-of-way, though, off Lot Seven runs through wetlands, so I'm not sure what you could do with that if you tried. Although there are no vernal pools on this particular parcel, there are vernal pools in that additional area. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Others?
Roxanne Sinclair, fifteen Brook Street. I don't know if the people that bought that land and want to put those eight houses in, that is all ledge. And you have to blast. And when you blast, other people's houses get totaled in the, with the impacts. Foundations get cracked. Who is going to be responsible for that? It's all ledge down there. So I'm, I don't know how they're going to put septic systems in if that's all ledge. That's not feasible, I wouldn't think. But I don't, I, myself and other people that live down there that have foundations do not want this because of the blasting.
Right now, what was submitted in the application, just to address the septic systems, they had a licensed site evaluator go out there, and ordinance requires two, you know, two systems be identified for potential. And according to the licensed site evaluator, that was part of the packet, that they do have sufficient soils for each of the eight lots. Again, you, you made a comment about what's going on in the future. We have no idea what those soils are, but for the eight lots, well, actually, seven, yeah, seven of them, because one is going to be on sewer, the one off the corner, but they have sufficient soils, according to a licensed site evaluator that was in the application packet. I understand your, you know, Maine is pretty shallow to bedrock most.
Well, no, but it is a lot of ledge.
Yeah.
Down in there.
Okay. Thank you.
A tall one. Okay. Robert Close, eighteen Union Street. Just a quick question, it's not a hostile question. How many of you have been to our neighborhood? I know you said you took a ride down there, which is, anyone else has been to our neighborhood? I take that as a no. You, okay, so several, you, okay, so you're like my students. You're hesitant to answer me because of my, my position of power. Okay. You know what we have, so what I want to talk to you about, and I will be brief, but I'll be cogent, is what we have, what you want, what we will lose, and what will be the benefit. Okay? What we have is a enviable pocket neighborhood. We have a neighborhood in which people who don't live there come down of an evening, strolling with their children and remarking to us, "We didn't know this existed. What a pleasant place. How, what a nice resource in Orono to have." In the planning industry, as opposed to putting plans forward, there's an adage about recognizing your beautiful land, then building on poor land so you can continue to observe the beautiful land. In this case, what I see is the beautiful land is recognized and the design is excavated, okay, rather than build on poorer lands so we can continue to enjoy this. So you have a plan, but this is not planning. This is not planning. So what we have is a pleasant pocket neighborhood. We have a peaceful neighborhood. We have a quiet neighborhood. All the neighbors know each other. What you want, and I'm judging from the title of this project, Riverside Estates? This is why I left New Jersey. Estates? This is a neighborhood of modest homes, for the most part, modest incomes, modest needs, modest people, and you want to put Riverside Estates? That spacks of exclusivity. That is one step removed from gated community. Okay? So now we're walking down our quiet pocket neighborhood street, and what we're seeing is Estates. The only thing missing is a subtitle that says, "Don't go here. No trespassing." Please, please, think of changing the name of this if you go through with this plan. And I'm not sure how you found us anyway. How did you find us? We tried so hard, okay? We tried so hard to lie low. So what, so I see you want to put eight houses, and what kind of houses? Are they one-family houses? Are they one-family McMansions? Whenever you look at a plan, you want, you want to look at three things: balance, impact, scale. How will this balance our neighborhood? What impact will it have? What about the scale? Will this throw shadows on the homes across the street in this Riverside Estates that you want to build? What we will lose, that's my third point, I think we will lose the character of our neighborhood. I think you, this is, because of the titular name of this, this Estates name, I think it already separates the neighborhood into the Estates and the non-Estates, and I see some of you putting your head in your hands already, but that will not stop me. Okay? I, I teach. I see this all the time. Okay? So my question is, I've told you what we will lose, okay? We will lose, I believe we will lose the character of our neighborhood. I think there'll be a certain division in the neighborhood between Estates and non-Estates, and I think it won't be as attractive for people who don't live there, but who are attracted to there just to walk of an evening, because it is a unique pocket neighborhood with a blessing of green space along that side of Union Street and at the bitter end of Union Street. So my last question I have is, what will be the benefit? Okay? Sid already mentioned the idea of a street light. He's correct. In the morning, you do take your life in your hands. You are dependent on the kindness of strangers to stop and let you through. This is what's known as the tragedy of the commons, is that you have a resource, just the right number of people using the resource, but when you put a few more people in, now you have to start rationing the resource. Remember when parking spaces at the Bangor International Airport were free for twenty minutes? Then a lot more people started to use the airport. Now you have to pay. That's the tragedy of the commons. Okay? The last point I want to make is I want a quote by one of my favorite authors, who isn't getting a bum rap these days, John Steinbeck. Before he died, he wrote a book called Travels with Charlie, and he traveled around the country in nineteen sixty-one in a camper. And sixty, the sixties, as you know from Bangor's history, was a horrendous time of urban removal, and there are people in Bangor who still weep at the memory of what Bangor did to its waterfront neighborhoods. But Steinbeck saw this going on, and he said, "I am not against progress, and neither am I, but I ask myself why so often it looks like destruction." And until I know better, okay, I'm just going to keep a wary eye on, on this. I'm just looking at balance, impact, and scale here, okay? And I think those are three very important points. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you. We don't often get Steinbeck quotes. Yeah. Others?
I'm Glenn Kaler, three sixty Main Street. I'm here in two capacities. First, as representing, representing, representing Bucky Owen of the Orono Land Trust, who couldn't be here tonight. So on behalf of the land trust, Bucky just asked me to pass along basically two comments. One is, with reference to the eight lots that are being discussed tonight, Orono Land Trust, you know, our basic mission is to have hiking, walking trails within walking distance of everybody in Orono. And as Evan mentioned, there is, the trail system connects down back through here, you know, currently, and we would just like to, you know, be kept in the loop and have a working relationship with the developer and the current owners and the planning board to keep that trail system identity, you know, kept in mind. I don't know how that would work out if, you know, maybe someday with the, if the houses go in through the railroad easement, which I realize they don't control the railroad easement, that's the railroad, but just to keep us in, keep the land, to get the trail system in mind as this thing develops. Then Bucky's other comment was about the possible expansion, you know, further down the other end of Union Street there. There's a tremendous opportunity for trail connection from Orono, really even Old Town, all the way down to Vezey into Bangor, along the river, especially with the dams taken out, the rivers pulled in, so land that was currently underwater is now even more walkable. And there's some really great river frontage right along that first part where they're, you know, and they may be putting houses in, in a second stage, and we'd really like to keep that within the planning board's mind and then the developer's mind about keeping that accessible as trail possibility. So those are the comments Bucky wanted me to forward to. Then in my second capacity is just as myself, and it's really not much different, but my house at three sixty Main Street has twenty-nine acres that abuts the Townsend property, which is across the railroad tracks behind us, and that abuts this property. So I'm sort of a fellow-abutter. And again, those lands all connect up, and then beyond us is the, the golf course. So all that woods in there all connects up. It's great trails in there, and it would just, it would be great to keep that continuity. And again, this whole idea about a trail going down along the Penobscot, again, from Old Town, you know, all the way down to Bangor, would be really something to, for the benefit of Orono, to keep that in mind as a potential, and, because if we can get that working, that would be humongous, if that's a word I can use in a planning board meeting. Trump does it all the time, so. But that, that trail not only is a wonderful thing in itself, but if you look at the really big picture, and this is my kind of personal soapbox, and I won't go too far on it, but if you look at what's going on with the corridor project on the other side of the highway, if you have this piece and you connect that up to the corridor, which is going to happen someday, I think, because they're making good progress on it, then you get this huge thirty-mile loop. And a, a planning director who should remain nameless, but he works for Orono, once told me, "If you get that going, you've got a destination, you know, a central main destination. People would come to use that." So I just like to keep those possibilities in mind and hope, you know, we can be kept in the loop. The land trust, I don't think has approached the owners yet about, you know, any kind of easement or anything. I think they're just trying to get their ducks lined up or, you know, see what's going on, but we do want to be part of the process if we can. Thanks.
Thank you. I do want to follow up on that. With our comprehensive plan, that this planning board was an integral part of that process, trail establishment is a big piece of, of what we typically consider with projects. So thank you for bringing that up.
And, you know, Orono, one of the great things about Orono is we have these green areas, and I grew up in Southern Ohio, and my hometown used to be a little wooded suburb surrounding Cincinnati. And then Cincinnati and Dayton all grew together and just congealed, and it's, it's really lost its soul, and I'd hate to see that happen here, because we can still have it here.
Thank you. Others?
Alan Neto, one oh four Union Street. I have a petition for the board, signed by the residents in our area. It is the, "We, the undersigned residents of Union, Brook Street, Emily Lane, Margin, Island Avenue, and Harrison Avenue in the town of Orono wish to communicate our deep concerns associated with the early-stage proposals of the anticipated development of Riverside Estates. We request that the town of Orono Planning Board take careful consideration into the potential negative impacts on the established residents, including but not limited to increased traffic congestion, as the neighborhood is only accessible by one road in, one road out. Loss of pedestrian character, potential environmental impacts on nearby wetlands and wildlife, including known Eagle's Nest on the Penobscot River. As such, the undersigned request a partial, an impartial traffic and environmental study and assessment in order to have a clear picture of what lies ahead should the proposed Riverside Estates move forward."
Very good. Can you provide that to staff?
Yes.
That'd be great.
So who would I?
That man right there. Others?
My name is Jamie Comstock. I live at one Brook Street, which is at the corner of Union Street and Brook Street. I don't know how many of you know much about our neighborhood. It was founded, settled by several families who have, who lived there for generations. I know this because I married into one of those families, and my husband's grandmother, Christine Dyer, passed away last year at the age of ninety-three after spending her entire life in this neighborhood. So many of the folks you see here are descendants of those original settlers, and we still live in this neighborhood. So as Bob described, it's, it's a really enviable neighborhood. It is one of those neighborhoods, I'm a trained city planner, I don't practice, but it's one of those neighborhoods that we dream of finding, and when I found this neighborhood, I was, it was awesome. It's been such a great place to live and to raise my kids. I, I too- I, I too am struggling to see the benefit of this, this development to the neighborhood. I look around Orano and I see lots of undeveloped subdivisions. And so I, I wonder, why do we add another one? I also am concerned about the traffic impacts. If you have visited our neighborhood, you have noticed how tight passages between, excuse me, two vehicles who are crossing. Once you add snow to that, we have much tighter confines. And so even the addition of the eight to nine trip ends during peak hour, or 70-ish in a 24-hour period, will have a great impact in our neighborhood. I also wanted to note that if you have come into our neighborhood, you have crossed over the railroad tracks and have noticed how you need to mind your suspension when you do so. So I, I worry about construction traffic. I would love to know what the plan is for improving that crossing over the rail, railroad tracks at that point. And this is where you turn off of Margin Street onto Union Street, and the only entryway into the neighborhood. So anyway, I want to thank you for your time, and thank you for your careful review of this concept.
Thank you very much. Others?
I'll get to these in a minute. Good evening. My name's Paul Schrader. I brought some documentation with me. I live at, I've lived with my family at 13 Hamlin Street since 1989. And I'm one of those near neighbors who, although we recognize, we probably have no rights of public access, have, have appreciated being able to wander in this area. And I've been wandering in that area for, you know, all of the 27 years that I've lived in Orano. Back there, if anyone wants to see them, I've also been taking panoramic photographs of the riverscape for about 20 years. You may or may not remember, I had a display of them at the store for a while. And the purpose of these photographs is, isn't to show what a beautiful set of parcels there are so they can be developed. The purpose is to show what incredible beauty we have here in Orano, available to all of us, and how much we have to appreciate what we have before it's gone. Now, over the last couple of days, I went down there, and, and I'm very concerned about the river shed, the riverscape and the river shed. What is visible from our neighbors across the river? That's Bradley and Eddington. What's, what's visible from here? Do we have any responsibility to those people who live on the other side? Do they have any responsibility to us? So over the last couple of days, I went down there and I took some photographs from immediately in the center of the proposed expanded, you know, Phase Two development, and some photographs from immediately across the river from those, from that development. And I'd just like to hand these over to the planning board, so that you can see what the river looks like today, or yesterday, or day before, the last two days. And, and these are yours. Now, I really appreciate that there is some rule or some standard practice in the planning, with the planning board, with Orano, that required some notion of what full buildout here is going to look like. You know, some of you may, may or may not know, I've been very involved in the expansion issues around the Juniper Ridge landfill for quite a long time. And honestly, there's never been an expansion there. And there was never a clear statement to the public, what can this become? And so we've been fighting a rear-guard action there to try, try to preserve our community from being a dumping ground for trash from everywhere, because it was never made clear to anyone when it began how this sludge dump could become a multipurpose, universal special waste landfill. So I appreciate at least having a vision of where this might be going. There was mention earlier of no trespassing signs, and I've actually brought up with town staff, lack of public access to the river. I, I brought something else here I'd like to show you. I didn't know that it was going to relate to this, but it does. These are the dozens of no trespassing signs that are now up at the Webster Point development. And when that was going in, I came and I said, "What's going to happen to the public access to that beautiful parcel and that place on the river?" And I was assured at that time that there would be a public walk that would...
There is.
And I've brought you photos of it.
I live a stone's throw, and that was a big part of that application. I do need to pull this back to this project, though. I understand Webster Point...
Excuse me, this is about, I'm going to claim that this is about this project, because this has to do with what kinds of controls does the town put on developments like that? That picture that's up there is the end of that walk, the beginning of the town easement. There is no provision for the public whatsoever. It comes to an absolute dead end. There's shrubbery there. There's no access to a view. We were promised a viewpoint. We were promised public access. It does not exist. So my purpose here tonight is to say, I'm with the people who say, "I hope that something like public access through trail systems can be worked out with these developers." I hope that the public, the public stake in the riverscape that we have, that we share with our neighboring communities and that they share with us, can be protected with buffering, with visual setbacks, so that what we've gained with the river restoration project doesn't get lost with rampant development. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Other comments?
Eric Reardon, 102 Union Street. I rent the property from Lloyd and Margaret Wicket. They asked that I come here and share some comments and questions that they have. One thing that Lloyd wanted me to communicate is he was confused as to why only that first lot would have a requirement that they hook up to the sewer and not subsequent lots.
It's a distance question? I think Evan touched on that. If you're within 200 feet of an existing sewer, you are required by ordinance to connect to that.
Of existing public sewer.
Of existing public sewer, you're required to connect. And that's the only lot dimensionally that is close enough to town sewer to connect, and the others would require extension of town sewer.
So in virtue of that first connection to that first house lot, is the second house lot not at that point within that 200 feet?
Not within 200 feet of a public line. That connection is a private line. It's just a, it's just a service line from the public sewer to the house.
Another question he had. He thought that in looking at the first phase plan and then the new plans that came out, he thought it looked like there was a difference in the road width. He doesn't know if there's been any changes in terms of...
I believe the road width, and we saw this at Sketch Plan, that there was a five-foot that the applicant proposed to add or deed to the town, five feet. I don't, I'm not aware of any changes to that. Maybe in the corner, but I'm...
Are you, are you asking, Mr. Chair, are you, the mayor, are you asking the difference in road width and what might be the extension of the road versus...
Is the plan for it to be uniform along the entire length of Union Street?
The, the new roads must be built to 50-foot right-of-way width and 24-foot paved width. So it would actually be, I mean, if, conceivably, if the applicant's proposal, what's accepted by the planning board, it would be maximum 45-foot width. And don't know what the pavement would be. It could be required to be 24-foot wide, widened, if they came in with a plan similar. That would be a matter for that future discussion. So there could be possibly a slightly different width.
Was your question the existing road width? I don't think there's any proposal before us to do anything with the existing road unless, and again, we're not going there this evening, unless they push on to that backlog.
Yeah, his question was just related to the different sets of plans. He thought there was a discrepancy in the road.
I don't, I don't believe so.
But no, he's saying that in the, in the conceptual plan, the new road, the extension of Union Street, would indeed be 50-foot wide versus the existing Union Street, which is now 40 feet, would become 45-foot wide under right-of-way. And so there would be a difference, you know, as you cross that boundary line, under the existing proposal and that concept.
And then connected to this, this question, and going off of what was discussed earlier, so there is a chance that some of that widening happens on the other side of the street, the side that is, already has residents there.
That's what the applicant proposed as one option. This board is going to be discussing that, I think, at length, following some public comment.
I think it's fair to say there's some concerns associated with that.
Understood.
With some of the houses being relatively close to the road there. Any information about, or maybe this could be repeated, square footage, minimum square footage of the, the proposed homes for these eight lots?
Minimum 1,000 to 1,200, did that ring? That's what I heard. Yeah. So that's the minimum. Single-family, need to have at least a minimum of one-car garage, I think I, I recall reading, and minimum square footage, 1,000 to 1,200.
And then he just wanted to echo this idea of there being, you know, one point of egress up to Island Ave, and difficulties with, with traffic as they already exist, and the idea that, you know, eight lots and then perhaps 31 lots would, would certainly compound those issues that, that residents already face.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to just note that at your desk is a email from Mr. Wicket that I received yesterday and made copies for you and for the record.
Would you like me to read it into the record?
I think probably the summary is fine, and now you have the written as well. You don't think you need to read that into the record, but it'll become part of the record.
Okay.
Because he had, they had representative here to summarize the comments.
Very good. Thank you. Other questions?
Hello. I'm Julia McGuire, and I'm at 38 Union Street. Thank you so much for hearing our comments tonight. I would like to echo what most folks have said about concerns about traffic flow, and put that on the record. And specifically, I'm a little skeptical that the no-impact analysis in terms of eight to nine vehicles is realistic. Coming from a two-car household, I think many of us in the neighborhood have more than one vehicle per family, and so feasibly, the impact could be higher than estimates say. In addition, I'd like to echo sentiments about the wonderful Pocket neighborhood being pedestrian-accessible, and the current concerns about additional cars being significant to the safety. And a number of us have young children, and many families walk in the neighborhood, and so that sidewalks or pedestrian safety, even without the further proposed extension, I'd very much like you to consider the needs of the neighborhood in that respect. And again, echoing sentiments of this shared use, public use of the historical, public use of the land at the end of the road. And while it hasn't been official, it's been a valued resource for the community for a number of years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Others?
Alan Neto, again, 104 Union. I have a question. The sidewalk issue. Now, if that was to be put in at a later date, who would be responsible to do that? Would that be up to the town to do, or the developer?
I believe, because if that would be in the town right-of-way, my understanding would, would be that the town would be on, or would they make the developer?
No, if this were, if this were, if the need for the sidewalk were stimulated by the fact of the additional development that they're being, that's being discussed, the developer would have to pay for all of that, and would have to put up improvement guarantee agreement to, to do that. It would be inspected by the town, had to build to town standards, but it'd be at the developer's cost.
Okay.
I mean, if nothing else ever happened, and...
Right.
Everybody decided there ought to be a sidewalk there in the future, then it'd be the town's responsibility to do that.
Okay. I just wanted to kind of clarify that.
Good, good question.
Thank you.
All right. So, yeah, well, I mean, we've heard some common concerns, so we, we get the traffic issue, understand the neighborhood concept. Anything new?
Real quick. Thanks for the second chance. I'll say, this is my third hat. I'm a member of the Orano Trails Committee, which basically consists of patting Dave on the back, and thanks for the great work that Dave does. But just a point I'd like to make is, if this development goes through, it would be in the advantage of the town and of the developer, that those house lots would be worth a lot more if they're part of an integrated trail system, and it's all been kind of done, you know, connected up in a nice way. So it would benefit everybody to keep that in mind.
Good point. Very good. Well, I'm going to leave the public hearing open, because there will be some ongoing discussion, and we're going to have comments from the board. Again, I do want to mention to the board, I, I drove out on that street. I, in my opinion, I don't see any way that five feet is coming from the other side of the road. And right-of-way, you know, center line of roadway, center line of right-of-way, I don't really think that's much of an issue as far as what might need to be done, the potential for the project and the development of 20-some lots in the future, if that happens. I don't see that as being a burden on the, on the neighbors, in, in my opinion. I am not sure. We've heard, and we did receive comments from our town engineer, questioning whether 45 feet would do it. That, that's a pretty tight space to fit a 24-foot roadway. Again, you know, if you have any fill extensions going down, throw in a sidewalk, that's a, that's a tough task. It gets pretty tight. But in my opinion, again, if you want to take a drive out there, there's practically no room on that, on that other side. And I don't see five feet coming from the other side of the road. So the project, you know, again, this is what I noticed out there, but the project is, you know, new house lots, potential for, for many more. I don't see the neighbors, you know, taking, taking the brunt of that. So that, that's my opinion. Stormwater management, I looked at that. It's pretty common to shed stormwater into a wet one, but I've used that one before. Minimal impact, so that, that doesn't seem to be an issue. We looked at the turnaround. Apparently, that's acceptable to the town now, so they're going to provide an easement there. And they have some drainage accommodations when lots get developed to deal with an existing culvert. Traffic issue, we heard that. And to address that comment, traffic issue, there's, there's a manual. It's the ITE manual. Transportation engineers use that. Our town planner used that, that manual to do his calculations, and they, it's pretty, pretty standard how they go about those calculations. So if you just punch the numbers, eight house lots, and it'll, it spits out a number. So I understand your concern with what that number might be, but that, that's transportation engineering right there. So that, that's where those numbers came from. I think everybody in Orano understands that, I mean, I live on North Main Avenue, and we talked about this last time at Sketch Plan. Trying to turn left on the North Main, on the, you know, Main Street coming out of North Main is, is not going to happen. So I feel your pain there. There's a lot of cars going up and down that street. So addition of eight house lots, from a traffic impact standpoint, and gentleman asked about environmental impacts and traffic impacts, eight lots aren't really going to do much. It's already a tough, you know, tough task getting out on Main Street, so that, that's, that's an issue. And we did receive quite, quite a bit of information from state agencies, talking about the, the project in front of us, the eight lots and the impacts. Again, they didn't find any rare plant species. We, you know, the, the Eagles Nest were outside, so I would think... would think certainly if, if any project moved forward, if the next phase came through, all those things will be addressed. So, traffic impacts, transportation study, environmental impacts, those are certainly warranted, in, in my opinion, for any, any future development. But right now, that, I mean, the biggest thing, again, get off, you know, my opinions, I want to hear from you, but the biggest issue is the right-of-way and preparing for what might happen down the road. So, other, other thoughts?
I'd just like to share my thoughts, I've, I've listened to a lot of comments, and I've heard the concern about walking in the area. Unfortunately, I don't personally get much time to walk, and I wish that I had more time to do so. Given that the applicant has gone through the trouble of providing a fairly detailed, in my opinion, conceptual layout, it is conceptual, there's no guarantees, but it's definitely over the horizon as it appears, and given the fact that it sounds like if that were to occur, we would be required, we would be requiring the applicant to install a walkway, basically retrofitter walkway onto the project that we're proposing now, seems like it would be prudent for the board to consider requiring the walkway go-in now, sooner than later. That would do two things, one, it would allow at least some measure of walk safety, as this, you know, walkway safety as this goes on, and two, it might also alleviate some of the unknown, because a lot of what a year, here, here tonight is also an unknown. So, to me, that would provide the public with a guarantee moving forward. So, I think we should consider that.
Good point, others?
Yeah, I think that you, you said that you didn't think there was a room for five feet on the existing side where the houses are now?
The riverside.
The riverside, so why wouldn't we take ten feet at this point, make a fifty-foot right-of-way, and then we don't, we alleviate a lot of these traffic problems. I agree with what, what you just said, that I think we need to look forward, that probably will go in at some point, because this type of development from a comprehensive plan is what Orono needs, small, affordable housing. So, I think we should do it right, and get the street right to start with.
I agree, you did, I guess I wasn't clear enough, I, I would expect, if we go with a fifty-foot right-of-way, that that ten feet is coming from the project.
Right.
At, at a quick glance, just rough numbers, the lots have suitable size, minimum square footage is thirty thousand square feet, and if you take a look at the frontage, and so the frontage times five-foot width, the, the subtraction of that square footage, you know, some of them are a hundred and twenty-five foot, so if you take another seven hundred feet away from that, they still meet their minimum lot size requirements. So, they would, you know, that, that, that's what they might have to give up, but it doesn't reduce the number of lots on the project, but there's a little bit of wiggle room, just, again, rough math from what I looked at. Other comments? What are thoughts on the, yeah?
I, I just have a question about trail systems, because I'm, I'm always thinking about people's health, and I want people to be out walking, and I want people to appreciate, you know, the riverscape, but I understand this is privately owned property, so I don't can, is there something we should be thinking about in terms of negotiating with the property owner about keeping trail systems?
That's a great question, I mean, things like this come up fairly frequently, when we were reviewing, reviewing the avenue, there was quite a bit of negotiation between the land trust and that project, I think the Grove, for that matter, to preserve existing trails, some of them would be rerouted. I didn't see, when I was looking at the maps, that there's trails across the current property, maybe I missed them.
Yeah, yeah, trails do.
Yeah.
They're not labeled as such, but there, those are those big dashed lines, are the existing trail system.
Okay, I get it.
That goes right along, right across from that, what is a kind of a broken-up parking area at, that's the back part of Lot One, goes all the way through the subdivision and onto the backland. So, there's, there's a trail system there, it, it is private land, I would strongly advise against the planning board negotiating for, for legal reasons, for public access, I think it's perfectly appropriate for another entity of the town, you know, the Trails Committee if you wanted to, or a private entity like the Land Trust, to approach the property owner and see if there's anything that can be done. But you come very, you come into collision with the Fifth Amendment rights, and the takings of land issue in this regulatory realm. It's private land, there is no obligation, no rights of the public to trespass on public land, it's only by the beneficence of the landowner. And the avenue is different, and those, because those were cluster developments.
Mm-hmm.
Remember, when you get a cluster development, you get a very large density bonus, and in return, you are expected to provide some public benefits that would not ordinarily be required. You don't want to take, take advantage of that quid pro quo, you just default to the standard. Here, there is no clustering involved, they've defaulted to the standard. So, that opportunity is not appropriately available to the, to a regulatory board. Certainly would be available to others, and the developer's heard, heard things, if he wants to reach out, or if somebody, some other entity wants to reach out to them, and whether it's these lots or something future, they can do so.
Thank you for that clarification, Evan. Other, other questions for the applicant? All right?
I would just say, I mean, we hear the board on it, I mean, if, if there's a real push for the, you know, fifty-foot right-of-way on it, I, it's not really gonna hurt our lots as, as was mentioned on it, we have setbacks that are actually controlled by the power easement that goes across the front of those lots also, so it really doesn't, isn't gonna impact the position of the housing on the lots either, from that standpoint, so I don't, I guess I'm just saying that we don't necessarily have a concern that if the board prefers to go with the full fifty feet, that we can provide the additional five feet on top of what we're already provided.
Okay, thank you. Questions, I, I think one hanging out there, we, we had a couple comments supporting whether the sidewalk goes in now. Right now, again, I've heard your concern, but the nearest sidewalk, Evan, could you give me, just, or give the board just a quick estimate? You said the nearest sidewalk, and you showed it on one of the diagrams in the review.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's at the bottom of Island Avenue.
Yep.
And if you look at my report to you, um, yes, page eight, it's about a quarter-mile away from this subdivision.
So, I'm just thinking, to carry that thought out, so fifty feet right-of-way, we require that with a sidewalk, the road varies in dimension, in the width of the road now, didn't I read?
Well, the road is roughly eighteen, nineteen feet wide, you know, and paved with, that's my informal estimate, but Public Works has a manual, has a document that doesn't measure every fifty feet, but as, as an average, and it's in that, it's in, it's in that area, yes.
So, I guess my thought is, Jeremy, if, if you carried that out, so constructing a new sidewalk, I think that the time to do road improvements would be at the same time, so you'd wrap all those improvements in at the same time, and I'm just trying to figure out for an eight-lot subdivision with a quarter-mile distance, you know, you'd have a sidewalk hanging out there, and I'm just, just thinking, if that would interfere with, you know, just doing the road right at a future date, if the, the second phase went through, that's what I'm just thinking ahead a little bit.
It would, I guess it could be conceived as the sidewalk to nowhere, you know, at this, at this phase, however, I, in my opinion, that balances the concern of the public with what the public's asking for, so.
Yeah.
At this phase.
Okay.
I, I would just propose we consider requiring that.
Okay. I'd like to hear from others, I mean, all of you, so let's start down that end.
The only note I had was about a sidewalk, especially during construction, it would, it would ease a lot of that pedestrian traffic with all the construction traffic coming in and out, especially if the expansion happens down the road.
Okay.
The sidewalk would be there for all the new construction, too.
Good point, John?
I'd agree with that.
Okay, Dave, you've already weighed in, Jeremy, thank you, what do you think?
So, I have a question, so are we, the thought is, is that if phase, the next two phases were to happen, they would likely have to bring this road up to standard.
Correct.
I, I think it's, I think the word likely is correct, you know, there, there's, the new roads
Would definitely.
They build would have to.
Understood.
Potentially, based on the evidence that you receive, you would, you could require that.
I mean, I think it would, we'd want to probably have a second opinion on, from Public Works or something, to say, okay, does it make sense to put a sidewalk in here now, if in two years they're gonna have to rip it up? I guess I'd want an opinion on.
I did discuss this with Public Works Department, we had a departmental meeting, department heads, as we usually do, on, on developments like this, and Rob Bjork, the Public Works Director, though he did not give it to me in, in writing, and you may wish to have that in writing, said that at this point, he would not advocate for a sidewalk because the changes in drainage system, the curbing, other things, and, you know, cross-section might make, make it hard to work in isolation from the rest. But he also didn't, wasn't here, and didn't hear the public comments from the public hearing, and I don't know if his mind would change, or whatever, but I, we could certainly seek from him a, a written statement as to his current opinion.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to, and then even if our town engineer could weigh in on that, I'd, I'd just like to get an opinion, because, I mean, if you do a sidewalk, curb, then, then, again, you're altering drainage systems, and then you might be going with catch basins and what have you, and I, I just, from a planning standpoint, I would think that time to do that is when you, you, you're gonna do the, the road all the way in, but that, just.
Like to input all to, also, I mean, when you do talk sidewalk with a curb in, which is what the town requires with the sidewalk, you do bring in enclosed drainage, there's no other way to deal with it.
Yeah.
And so, when you start putting in enclosed drainage, and, and you start running into more potential for conflicts if things change by later standards on it, from that standpoint, so it, it does, it, it's not just simply adding the five-foot sidewalk, there's a substantial additional consequence by adding the sidewalk.
All right, so I guess thoughts are, you know, other options, I'm just wondering, so whether you could actually prepare, you know, so, give us the ten feet, and perhaps gravel way, so you at least have a base, so that there's an option, so you can get off the street, perhaps with additional traffic, but yet not, not go all in on a sidewalk, so provide an area for pedestrians to walk, I know the winter time might be a little tough, but I'm just thinking of a, of a temporary solution until all improvements might be, might be warranted.
And can we even tag this approval with the, an indicator that says, our thought is, is that if these next phases were to move forward and get approved, we would expect the road and the sidewalk would have to be put in in this area. So, essentially, we're, you know, giving, I don't know, I don't want to use the word guarantee, but we're, we're kind of, like you're saying, laying those fears and saying, hey, if this is gonna happen, then this is gonna have to happen up here, and so everyone goes in knowing full well what has to happen.
Yes, that could be made part of the public record, and you could, you could state it as something that you wanted to be, as a by-vote.
Yep.
As something that you wanted in the public record to be available to developers, the public, and, and future board members, should a future development proposal come forward.
And that was, you know, so we put in the extra ten feet, as you indicated, and we have that, that key in there to, to make sure that everyone's on the same page about what would have to happen in the future.
Yeah.
So, it's less likely that, you know, in three years, someone forgets, which I don't think is likely.
It seems like that approach would remove the unknown, and it would preserve pedestrian safety, and it would balance, you know, future construction needs.
I think we fully understand the board, too, as far as future activities go, what's gonna be required when we come back, if we come back from that standpoint, so we are hearing what the board's saying, you know, at this point in time, so.
All right, so, I guess, all right, let's keep going down, you, you've heard that sidewalks will now require quite a bit of drainage improvements, catch basins and, and all, all of that, so, all right, let's keep going down that way for, I'd, I'd like to hear your thoughts.
Well, I, I think sidewalks are very important, as everybody who's been on the board for a while knows, but if we can be pretty sure that the sidewalk will go in when we get the additional lots, then I think it would be appropriate to wait until that happens.
All right, thank you, Krista. Lisa?
So, do we all agree we want to expand the width of the road prior to Phase Two? Or we, because that's, I, I think that's really important.
Right, I, I think we've, I think we've cleared that, without actually stating it, but thank you for bringing that up.
All right. And I'm ambivalent about the sidewalk issue, because I just don't know when would be the best time to do it, but I think, I, I mean, certainly, I, I think there should be a sidewalk there at the end of Phase One, and when that gets put in, I don't know, but.
At the end of, could you clarify that?
Yeah, so like, let's say we only have eight lots there.
Yeah.
I still think there should be a sidewalk.
Okay.
For safety reasons, and for best reason, reason.
Regarding the sidewalk, I, I would like to hear what Public Works thinks about the sidewalk, you know, connecting, having a separate sidewalk that's not necessarily connected now, doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, but thinking ahead, I can, I can agree with, you know, at least laying the groundwork for setting the expectation, so I think I'd like to rely on Public Works on the sidewalk decision.
All right, so we, we've got a couple different things going on, we, we've had some discussion, is the board okay with getting more information from town staff, town engineer, and Public Works before we make that call?
Yes, we should.
All right. Okay, but we're all in on ten-foot, right? Yeah. Expanding the right-of-way to fifty feet, that ten feet's coming from the, the applicant. Wait to see for the next round, and recommendations for a sidewalk and timing, so we can, you know, get, get them to weigh in, again, in writing, or Rob could attend the meeting, so that everybody could hear that, that's, that's a possibility, too. Other questions, so, we heard about environmental impacts, again, I, again, voiced my opinion that eight lots, I'm not sure that we need to go there now, given the, the documentation that we've received, so what are, what are any thoughts on, on that, that it was brought up by the, the public, so I wanted to address that right now. As part of this project that we're reviewing, do we see the need for an environmental study, above and beyond what we've already received?
I don't. I don't either, based on this eight lots and the contents they gave us, I don't, I don't see a need, no.
Okay.
No, I don't see a need.
Okay, next up, traffic issue, I mean, it's, it's a standard calculation, this is eight lots, it's not, not a large project. If this moves forward and we add twenty-four, without a doubt, there's gonna have to be a traffic study, but using the I T E manual, again, Transportation Engineering Basics, doesn't appear that we need to, need to recommend a, a more in-depth traffic study. Thoughts on that?
I'd like to make a comment on that, I live on Sylvan Road, which dumps into Stillwater Avenue, and I can tell you that when the traffic is heavy, I have to turn right, go down the light and come back around to go left, like, you just, you take your life in your hand to get across there, so I understand your concern with traffic. I, I do agree, though, that I don't think eight lots are gonna make much difference, because most of the traffic, be it Stillwater or be it Main Street, is true traffic coming over and going back from the communities across the Penau Scott River. Unfortunately, we sit right in a direct line between Bangor and point south in the other side of the river, and there's only two bridges, so you're gonna go the one or the other.
Thank you, other thoughts on that? Are we okay with, all right. So, we had traffic, we had environmental assessment, we talked about the riverscape from this project, and again, I heard the concerns, I, I agree with, you know, beautiful perspectives of Orono, this one's on the opposite side of the river, I think, you know, river setbacks and, you know, trail systems, all of that stuff would be more appropriate, would come into play more so in, if and when the next phase would come through.
Agree.
Agree. All right. Okay, ledge issues, septic systems, we, they provided data that the suitable systems can be located on site, blasting issues, any Any, you know, anytime blasting occurs, if they, again, Evan, you can follow up on this, but they have to have a blasting plan to protect the neighbors. So there's, you know, main drilling and blasting, there's, there's gotta be a pre-blast survey, isn't, isn't, there's requirements to protect neighboring properties?
Yeah, they typically would have to be, there's, there are state statutes about blasting. I'm skeptical that, I don't doubt that people who live in this neighborhood, you know, understand it better than I do from just a, a long time's presence there, but the soils analysis, both the, um, I used to call it the SCS now, the agency changed a long time ago, and RCS, Medium Intensity Soil Survey, and the in-depth surveys done, the onsite surveys done as part of this project, show that in the majority of cases, refusal, that is ledge or some other form of refusal, is more than 40 inches below, and 40 inches is the magic maximum depth for septic systems. In some cases, they may be as, it may be as close as 15 to 18 inches, in which case the leach field probably would be somewhat raised, you know, mounted, it would be, they wouldn't blast, they would simply raise the ground somewhat to meet the septic leach field requirements. So I don't think there'll be blasting for septic, I.
Correct, I would think for foundation if they went there. All right, last, last issue that, that I had written down from, from the public comments was the, it was a comment on sewer line and whether that would be extended. I think that's, again, we, we have no idea what the soils are gonna be like in any future development out there, so that's up to the applicant to demonstrate that they will have that capacity at a later stage if and when we get there. But for this project, it's, you know, the, the first lot will be on town sewer, and then there's no proposed sewer extension at this point.
Mr. Chairman, may I just point something out to the board and to the public?
You may.
It's, it's, this is kind of an aside, but I think it's an important just consideration. People talk about balance and, and so forth. Everybody should remember, I'm, I'm a big fan of public utilities, including public sewer, you know, septic systems often are fine and they're, they're sizing things according. I don't know what happens, you know, when you put that many on sandy gravelly soil in, near the Penau Scott River. I don't know, nitrate loadings or other things. They'll have to document things if that, if it goes that way and they wanna do that. But if you do public sewer, I just want everybody to understand, they could have many more dwelling units. Under state law, the maximum dwelling units you can get with septic system is one dwelling unit per half acre, or 20,000 square feet. Our ordinance requires even larger lots. We require a minimum of 30,000 square feet and less density. But if you have sewer, you could, instead of eight lots, they could have 10 or 12 lots here, if they sewer the whole thing. And on the 26 lots, they could have, and if they clustered the development and, you know, preserved open space, which is a great thing, but part of the ordinance and clustering is that incentive, you get more density in return for open space, and some people love that trade-off and some people hate it, but they could get many more units. So to the extent that sewerin becomes a necessity, um, the, the ordinance allows more density because public save, public health of groundwater does not require the lower densities. And in turn, that higher density allows the developer to pay for the costs, the upfront cost of a sewer line. So there's that trade-off. So people who advocate for the public sewer, great, but it probably comes with more dwelling units.
Thank you, Evan. Any last questions for the?
I actually have a question.
Yeah.
I, I know that you said this was in a 100-year flood zone.
It is not.
Not in a 100-year, 100-year, that's not a 100-year flood zone. I know that in Louisiana, they were in a 500-year flood zone and it flooded, and we have climate change. So I just, I'm putting that out there, I don't know where this sits, but I just wonder about that.
Yep, I mean, it's, it's a good question and it's something we all should be concerned with. There is a, there is a fair drop-off of topography, you know, on, on the other side of the river. The floodplain, the map during here to show you, it looks like there's, I don't know where the 500-year floodplain, I don't think the 500-year comes up here either as mapped by FEMA with, if there's been, if, if climate change means wetter for this region and so forth, I don't know the degree which either the 100-year or the 500-year would change, but those are the maps now, the official maps, and those are what control as of now.
The 500-year floodplain just, again, just kinda comes up and touches Lot One on the property from that standpoint, and I don't know that those have been adjusted since the dams have been removed, so if that's, if they haven't been adjusted, then they're probably gonna be not even that high.
All right, I'm gonna take final public comments. Again, please keep it to, and we've heard all your concerns and we appreciate the comments, please keep it to, any items that applicants should hear before we close the hearing?
Yeah, thanks. Paul Schrader, again, a comment was made by a member of the board that I would like to get some clarification on. It was stated that this development is in line with the comprehensive plan, including affordable housing. And I don't know what the definition of single-family affordable housing is, however, I don't remember the proposal containing anything about these being affordable. So the first question I have, since it came up from the board, are these quote-unquote affordable, intended to be affordable housing?
I'm not aware that they are, if you could address that?
Right now, the, the plan is just, just sell lots. They're not building the homes themselves at the current time. Typically, Maury and Mary have sold to builders who, depending on their market and their clients, will build on the home, on the lots for what is required. We've set out some minimum requirements, which are pretty low size homes, so they certainly could fit into an affordable housing. They're not restrictive against, you know, affordable housing from that standpoint, so we're not restricting against that. But we're not, I mean, Mary and, or Eminem is not planning on initially, in the outset, building any of the homes in there, they sell lots.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, my, my follow-up is on the, on the same point. We've heard, I've heard a certain number of square foot minimum. For these houses and lots, what would the square footage maximum be?
I'm not aware, I didn't see that in the application, and I'm not sure that they're required to provide that unless.
Is, is, is there anything in the ordinance or, I mean, what, how big of a, how big of houses can we expect?
Lot coverage would, would fall into play, or come into play in the ordinance, right? I mean, there's a maximum lot coverage.
Lot coverage of the building, building coverage would come into play. It'd be very, very, very large. I mean, I think it's, I think it is a 30% limit, which would be much more applicable in the village district or on smaller lots than 30,000 square feet. But there is that limit, otherwise there is no maximum housing, maximum square footage.
I guess to follow up, I, I am aware that they base certain stormwater management calculations based on typical sizing assumptions, so what do you figure, half acre? I'm, I didn't really go through the whole model, but what, this ballpark, what, what did you have in mind for the lots?
Basically, what we show on.
Could you, uh, sorry, need you up there?
You know, these rectangles that we show on the plan is what we were using for footprint.
I apologize, we need, need it on the record and the mic, yeah.
The plan shows footprint size as far as the buildings were concerned, as required by the ordinance, and that's what we use. So we use probably about a 70-foot long house that would count garage and probably 30, or 30 to 30 feet wide, I think, would be the guesstimate width of it.
Okay.
From the stormwater management criteria on it. If you give me one second, I can tell you what the total impervious area would have been.
I recall it's something in the neighborhood of a half acre for a lot.
I think we considered a half acre on, on it. Yeah, we considered about, yeah, about a half an acre on all eight, counting the driveways, between the houses and the driveways, a half an acre in size.
So that, that's a ballpark number?
Thank you.
Yeah, very good. All right, last, last comments and then I'm gonna close the public hearing. Yeah. Can I have you state your name again and speak right in the mic?
Sidney Simclair. Regarding the lots themselves, what is the proposed guesstimate for what they will retail for?
That's, that's not something that this board can even touch. That's up to the applicant and what I think, what the market will bear, but good question.
All right, and, uh, well, it, it goes toward affordability. You know, if this lot is selling for 50 grand, all of a sudden, it just became unaffordable.
Right. Good question, but that's not, not an item that, that we usually consider.
Would they be retailed minus the septic and?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay.
All right, I think I had a question there, we got two more, and then I've gotta, gotta close the hearing, yeah.
This is kind of a just an errant thought. Years ago, when Bangor, the former Bangor Hydro was planning on the basin Mills Dam, you might remember, and people were split on that, and it's a moot thing now, but at the time, Bangor Hydro, in order to sweeten the deal basically, they put in the, the boat launch down in our neighborhood as an amelioration, I think they called it. And then Bangor Hydro is no longer, we got the boat launch, beautiful, we didn't get the dam, everyone's happy. I'm wondering, and this is a real honest question actually, is someone in a position to suggest ever so gently to the developer, maybe there could be some amelioration towards our neighborhood, a gift to the neighborhood, maybe as someone said, the crossing of the railroad is, is, you know, it's, it's axle grinding, and the thing is that the town keeps patching it with tar asphalt when there's a way to do it properly with metal plates. I'm, I'm asking, who's in a position to, to ask that maybe something could be done? Because everything that's been talked about's been very mechanical, rights of way, sewage system, sidewalk, but no one's spoken about the affective aspects of dumping a development in a settled neighborhood.
I'm gonna defer to our town planner for that, that question, 'cause this board has limited authority, and we're not gonna negotiate. We, we listen to comments, the applicant hears them, and hopefully they'll accommodate some of those concerns, but as far as.
Yeah, the, the affective elements of, of this, which, you know, which are important, are really embodied and answered legislatively in the fact that single-family dwellings on 30,000 square foot lots aren't allowed use. And so through earlier public hearings and discussions and, and town council decisions, including guidance from conference of planning work and goals of the town in terms of having single, in-town, single-family housing opportunities, they made decision that in general, this kind of scale of development of this type of use, single-family homes, is in character and of net benefit to the town and the neighborhoods.
I guess that's my.
As, as in terms of asking for some remuneration, it wouldn't be, you know, something that to help out the neighborhood, such as something along repaving or something, a regulatory board cannot ask that, should not ask that, but lots of people here have heard you mention it.
I guess that's, that's my question, as I said, it's an hon, it's not a hostile question. Do, do I ask the developer?
You certainly can.
I can.
You certainly can.
Okay, I can write a good letter. Because what I want is, I want the railroad crossing permanized with metal plates. I'd like the power lines buried, so we have more sky. I don't want a light rail system. I, I want.
Want the Ayers Island Bridge fixed and?
Well, that's, we'll have another meeting about that one. We'll need a bottle of scotch though, but I'm, I'm just talking about the fact that, you know, we want, we want people to work together on this and we don't want people to feel wounded, and some people will grieve, and we want the grief to be, the grief to be acknowledged. But, so I, I'm the person who needs to do that, I'm happy to do it, okay? So I can appro, of course, I'm a citizen, I can do what I want, right? So I'll approach the developer, this is Eminem trucking, and I will ask for these gestures towards the neighborhood.
Very good.
Okay, that's all I'm asking.
Thank you. Last comment? Yeah.
Glenn Kaler, 360 Main Street. It's a similar vein to Bob's question, but responding to Dr. Buck's question about dealing with the trail integration issues when the, if there's a future phase. Just keep in mind that once eight lots are sold, then you've gotta deal with eight owners instead of one owner now, so it would be, it would be a great gesture if something could be discussed, and this is, you know, what Land Trust needs to talk with the owner about, is addressing that issue while it's all in one hand to make it simpler to deal with getting some kind of five-foot easement or something along the railroad, you know, right away or something, before it gets complicated with eight owners and then it becomes, you know, it only takes one to screw it up.
Very good. Thanks, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Limit discussion, board members, we've tackled most of the issues and we've had some great public comment this evening. Any outstanding issues? I wrote them down, I don't know that I missed any. All right, well, I think we're ready to make a motion. I mean, again, this is a preliminary hearing, there's gonna be a final hearing. Applicant is, he's listened to all your comments, so there'll be another opportunity to come and enjoy another planning board meeting, so, but at this point, I, I think we're ready for a motion. I mean, preliminary, I, I forget procedurally.
You're, you're doing fine. Would you like me to summarize, although I may miss something, you're taking notes?
You can take a crack at it, yeah.
Not to make the motion, but to list what I would regard, what I have taken notes on might be possible conditions that you would like to attach to a motion to approve
Please do.
the preliminary major subdivision plan. And I'm also drawing some from the end of my report, which you have. And that is that the condition would be that the five-foot addition to the right-of-way width from this property would be expanded to a 10-foot wide addition, the length of the thing, as well as still maintaining that curve that's on the plan. Obtaining written or direct advice about the timing of the construction of a sidewalk and the, in front of these eight lots. The, uh, the need to have all legal documents relating to transfers of land and easements for the drainage, for the road right-of-way, for the temporary turnaround, need to be in proper form, reviewed and approved by the town attorney at the time, as part of the final plan application. And Mr. Chairman, if I, I should have asked for clarification on this from the applicant previously, and if I may now? And that is, that 50-foot right-of-way, what's happening with that?
Based on our discussion with the seller and the surveyors, they're, the surveyors are gonna go back in and reevaluate that to determine whether the change should be adjusted on that, but my guess is probably, that's probably gonna go away, but I'm waiting for direct input from the surveyors on their determination of their information.
Thank you. My recommended, uh, condition would be either documentation of the, the rights to that right-of-way result, for this, this property, or its elimination from the subdivision plan.
Great, 'cause your point was, again, we don't need it recorded in the registry for posterity.
We don't wanna put further into stone something that may not be accurate, but I don't know that.
Very good, so that'll be resolved by the next.
I think those were the things that I had on my list.
That includes your recommendations, the, the three you had, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Now I think we're ready for a motion. You may.
I move that we approve the preliminary subdivision plan by Riverside Estates at Union Street Tax Map 31-2 Lot One, Zone Medium Residential, Medium Intensity Residential, with four recommendations. The first is to add five feet to the right-of-way, so it'll be a total of 10 feet. Second.
50-foot total right-of-way.
50-foot total right-of-way.
10-foot coming from.
10 feet total added to it.
Correct.
To be clear, 50-foot total. Written advice from Public Works on the sidewalk and how that would or would not affect future development. Written advice from Public Works on the sidewalk and how that would or would not affect future development. All right-of-way easements tied to this being proper form and delivered to the lawyer, is that what you indicated?
Yeah, deliver to us, and we will get lawyers.
Involved. And then documentation on the rights to the right-of-way up to snuff, or eliminate them from the plan completely.
Very good. Thank you, Jen. We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
I'm a non-voting member tonight.
Okay, thank you very much.
The two associates are Jason and Michael, and you've got full seven.
Very good. Yeah, we have a full house this evening, so very good. Yes.
Can I just confirm, was that John Beckett that seconded?
I think so.
He was quick on the trigger, and that was a unanimous vote. Thank you. Moving on. Next item on our agenda, old business. We do have to sign the approved subdivision recording plan for the amendment to Eagle Crest Subdivision. Merritt Drive is approved July 27, 2016. Only planning board members that were present during that meeting.
I think the, everybody but Lisa and Jason. Lisa and Jason were not present.
Very good. Excuse me, a meeting's still going on. If you could carry that on outside, please. So, again, we'll sign that afterward.
Let me just make, remind everybody, you can adjourn the meeting. We go back there and sign it. You just have to sign it, there are four, there are two milars-
Yep.
Plus two paper copies. You have to sign all four, and you have to sign it in the exact same order.
All right.
So if you sign on the third line on one, you gotta sign on the third line on all of them, or the registered deeds will not accept them.
All right.
They'll assume that one is a forged copy of some sort and-
And we wanna do it again, so that sounds like a good idea.
And there's a special pen.
Special pen.
There. A milar will take a special Sharpie pen.
Very good. All right, so that'll be after we adjourn. Next item, new business. There is none. Discussion?
When is our next meeting?
Next meeting.
There will be a meeting in October. We have at least one, we have one applicant. There may be some other things, but we have one applicant on, for October the 19th. This is a, it would be an application for an additional use in the Village Commercial District, on a property in Village Commercial District that doesn't involve any new construction, but the use requires this kind of review, so.
Yep. Any ordinance modifications coming our way?
I'm meeting with the town council tomorrow on finishing up some things. Some things are now moving along. I don't know that there'll be anything that will come before the planning board in that regard. We are now starting, all of you who are involved with the Conference of Plan, we are now pretty deep into the background work, and we'll have our first public meeting at the end, in a week, with the Main Street property owners on the Main Street Overlay District. So that is moving along, and in time, if the council wants to move ahead with that, you know, with the public input, that would be a major amendment to the ordinance that will be coming before you for recommendation. But that will be a couple of months. It will not be this coming month.
A Christmas present. That'll be great. Thank you, Evan. Last item, adjournment?
Will we adjourn?
Second.
Very good. Ooh, wow. Who got the second? Did you get that?
I heard a female voice.
Dueling, yeah, all right. So you get it, Krista. No comments? All those in favor? See you next month.
You're on.